We are now calling the meeting to order. Please join us for standing for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, a nation without individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion now for the approval of the agenda? Would be Dave Burke and Brene. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you.
Well, thank you all for being here for the budget hearing. This is... we normally don't get this type of turnout, so it's really amazing. I'm a little worried. Wait a second. It's also Pittsburgh pride. So, welcome to the main event for the night, our Pittsburgh pride celebration. I would like to start just by emphasizing my gratitude to our principals, our nominating staff members, our families, friends, special guests for being here tonight. Most importantly, I would like to thank the recipients for going out of your way to make the lives of others better by modeling exceptional citizenship and exceptional character. Tonight's ceremony will be shared on the district website and on our YouTube channel. Tonight is really a super special night. It's one that the board loves more than any other. It's one that I love more than any other. If you think about it, if we put things in perspective, we have about 6,000 students in our district, and of those 6,000, 27 students will receive this recognition. That really separates you from a lot of the great students we have in the district, but it shows how much above and beyond you go to be such a great person, which is one of the best assets you can have in life because you're making the lives of others better, and I thank you for that. So, just to share with you how this works, every building is tasked with seeking out individuals they felt exemplified citizenship, and they were asked to describe why. Then, a building-level committee convenes and selects one candidate to be recognized at our board meeting. Now, beyond tonight's recognition, students will be recognized in many other ways based on the building that they're in. It can range from having their name or picture on a bulletin board, to having them included in the morning announcements, name on a plaque, working with their principal to decide on a special privilege or gift, ranging from free time to parking pass, to spiritware, to being a class helper, and being a speaker to other classes. So, that's what we do in school. Parents, if your child is between grades K and 5, you are responsible for Disney World. Middle school, boy, it's such a tough... we'll go Disney World. High school, it's big, right? Bigger kids, bigger recognitions, just a car. And so, that's the small print in here. So, as far as tonight is concerned, you're going to hear a lot of great things about our students that are recipients. As each student's name is called, I'm going to ask that student to stand up, and we're going to shower you with great words and kind words that were sent about you. After all nine recognitions have been read, students will then collect their frame certificates and proceed to stand behind the Board of Education where we will take many pictures of you, and we'll post the pictures, and all of you are welcome to take pictures. We'll start by... we'll go three at a time, so our board president will read the first three, and our board vice president will read the next three, and I will end the evening with the last three. It is now my pleasure to start the program by introducing our board president, Mrs. Robin Scott.
I am so delighted to present our first nominated student, Sage Bell. And would you please stand, Sage? Thank you. Sage is an 8th grader at Barker Road Middle School. She's on the yellow team, and she was nominated by Reyna Solzbach. She nominated Sage for this reason. Sage Bell consistently and effortlessly displays the core principle of kindness and empathy in the classroom, in after-school activities, and in the Rochester community. She has a natural gift for helping others, and she truly seems to enjoy having opportunities to take on this role. When I had the privilege to see her in classes as a student on the yellow team last year, she would choose to work with students who did not have anyone to work with in throughout the entire year. Her caring nature and outgoing personality would help students feel comfortable and included. One time, there was a student who was nervous about not having anyone to run with at practice. A few weeks later, this same student shared with me that Sage would often run with them, and this made them feel better about going to practice. This past summer, the Community Service Club was looking for volunteers over the summer to help a homeless family move on a hot summer day. Sage was the only student to volunteer, and she made a world of difference that day. Not only did she offer to stay later than expected after volunteering all morning as a web leader, but she also asked what more she could do to continue to do after the day was coming to an end. This homeless family was so appreciative of her support. She then found items in her home to donate to them. Lastly, I have personally witnessed her kindness towards animals and her passion for rescue. Sage has rescued, saved, and volunteered time to help animals in need at the local animal shelter. Also, in just the last few months, Sage saved a hurt snake on the road, used her own time and money to help a horse whose leg was hurt, plus convinced her family to rescue a dog. Her compassion and commitment to helping others is why she's being nominated for this Pittsburgh Pride Award. Our community is very fortunate to have her kindness and hard-working commitment to helping others. The next student being nominated is Mila Burno. Would you please stand? Mila is in the 4th grade at Allen Creek Elementary, and she was nominated by Ms. Hallett and Principal Biondi. It is with great pleasure that we nominate Mila Burno for the Pittsburgh Pride Award. Mila is the ideal candidate for Pittsburgh Pride as she exemplifies many character traits necessary for such a prestigious award. She embodies acceptance, cooperation, empathy, and support, which are the foundation of our community at Allen Creek Elementary. Mila starts every day with a smile and radiates positivity throughout the day. When she walks in the door, you can expect the biggest hug and good morning with a smile. Mila truly goes out of her way to make each day better for those around her. She is a role model for her peers, leads by example, and is someone that everyone, including adults, can count on regularly. She consistently maintains a positive demeanor, all while helping those around her. Her classmates look up to her and admire her willingness to lend a helping hand whenever needed. Mila has the ability to recognize when someone needs support and offers subtle support in a way that her peers feel supported and not judged. Students often want to have Mila as a partner or part of a group project, knowing they will get her best effort regardless of the task. Mila is always thinking of others, and her daily actions reflect this level of thoughtfulness. She is an active member of our Best Buddies Program and brings so much joy to our monthly meetings. She is a student council representative for our class and collects feedback and input from her classmates ahead of meetings when needed. If someone is out sick or going through a hard time, she will drop everything to make them a card that would be waiting on their desk the next morning. These small actions have such a great impact on those around her. Mila is deserving of the Pittsburgh Pride Award as she displays the morals and values we work so hard to cultivate in Pittsburgh. Mila is genuine, kind, helpful, and always willing to support those around her. Mila, thank you for being you. And next, we will have Delaney Pusko. Please stand. Delaney is a 4th grade student at Mendon Center Elementary, and she was nominated by Ms. Weeks. It is a pleasure to nominate Delaney for the Pittsburgh Pride Citizenship Award. This recognition is a testament to the outstanding qualities she possesses, including empathy, inclusion, and support for her peers. From the start of the year, Delaney has shown a remarkable ability to understand and connect with the feelings of others. Whether it is noticing a classmate feeling left out during recess, or comforting a friend who is struggling with a difficult assignment, Delaney's empathy knows no bounds. Further, she doesn't just sympathize with others, she actively seeks out ways to make others feel included and supported. No matter what problem may exist, Delaney is always a part of finding a solution. Another one of Delaney's defining qualities is her willingness to go the extra mile for her classmates. For example, when working in small groups for math, Delaney is the first one to draw in a peer who is reluctant to share. She celebrates her classmates' contributions and makes sure everyone feels valued. Delaney's impact extends far beyond her actions. It is her innate ability to lead by example that truly sets her apart. She is self-aware and is always reflecting on how her words and actions affect those around her. There is an humbleness about her, and she is not afraid to show her vulnerability in situations like class presentations or student council meetings. When conflicts arise among her peers, Delaney doesn't hesitate to step in as a mediator, using her intuitive understanding of classmates' emotions to find peaceful resolutions. In the end, it is Delaney's embodiment of the qualities of a true citizen: empathy, effort, initiative, and self-awareness that earned her this Pittsburgh Pride recognition. She is an inspiration to her peers and a reminder that even the smallest acts of kindness can make a world of difference. Delaney has been a consistently positive role model in our school community and has made a difference in the lives of many. Congratulations to me. Next, we will hear from our vice president of the school board, Jeff Casey.
The next student we're honoring tonight is Andrew Holvey. Andrews, can you please stand up from Sutherland High School? Andrew is the kind of student that everyone enjoys being around. He is considerate, respectful, and a wonderful collaborator. He personifies the tenets of our school's touchstone, which include community, respect, and integrity. He is a faithful friend, exudes respect for everyone around him, and demonstrates integrity in every way. Andrew has pushed himself throughout his time at Sutherland. As a senior, he is taking his 4th and 5th AP courses. He hasn't been afraid to challenge himself and has prepared himself very well for life after high school. He possesses and practices all of the traits to be successful, which is evident in everything he does. As one of his teachers put it, "Andrew's potential is boundless." Outside of school, Andrew loves to work and has done so full-time every summer throughout high school. He takes pride in his worth ethic and professionalism and is someone that can be trusted and relied on. In addition to his summers, he currently works part-time when not in school and when not participating in school events. Earlier this year, Andrew attended a dance at Mendon High School as an affiliate of Pittsburgh Central School's TIES program. TIES stands for Together Including Every Student, and is a program that promotes belonging and participation for young people with special needs in extracurricular and community activities. At the dance, Andrew accompanied a student and ensured that the student was comfortable, safe, and had fun. He was observed supporting the student throughout the event, encouraging the student to stay hydrated and take breaks, all while balancing time with his peers. Moreover, Andrew is a leader and role model on and off the field for Sutherland Varsity Baseball. Even if he and/or his team are struggling in a game, he is one of the first up to pick up his teammates and motivate them. Andrew is a kind soul who treats all with respect. He is down-to-earth and works hard at everything he does, whether it be school, baseball, or his job. His teachers and coaches feel very fortunate to have witnessed the growth that he has demonstrated throughout the years, and we are very proud to call him a Sutherland Knight. And Andrew was nominated by Mr. Puma and Mr. Winter. Next, we'd like to recognize Presley Imbergia. Please stand up. Presley is from Cawkins Road Middle School and was nominated by the Purple Team. The Purple Team at Cawkins Road is excited to nominate Presley for Pittsburgh Pride. Presley is an amazing student, classmate, and friend, and a terrific addition to the Purple Team and our Cawkins Road family. Presley is an ideal candidate for many reasons, but her patience, empathy, and inclusiveness towards her classmates tops the list. On a daily basis, she demonstrates a kindness and understanding towards all students that sets her apart from others. There are many people that are nice or friendly, but her natural instincts elevate her to a level that shows maturity beyond her years. She can recognize peers that are in need of a smile or a compliment and has a way to find good qualities in everyone. She makes the extra effort to include classmates in her day, whether with a smile, a greeting, a helping hand, or a personal compliment. She always goes out of her way to say hi and ask how your day is. She is kind and patient with everyone in class. Presley is a natural leader and role model to students. She works hard to have success in school. When something is a challenge for her, she demonstrates commendable perseverance to meet that challenge. She seems to appreciate learning for the right reasons and understand the bigger meaning behind her assignments. Presley is an incredibly well-rounded person. Besides being a conscientious student, she is also a dedicated athlete. She is part of the JV lacrosse program. She is coachable, has a positive teammate, is funny, hardworking, and always looking to improve her game. She is usually the first to practice and ready to help set up the field. She asks for guidance in her game, as well as just being a good teammate. Presley also participated with the Unified Basketball Team this year and was an outstanding addition. She was amazing at interacting with the whole team by initiating conversations with students, helping during drills, and treating everyone with kindness. We all enjoy her smile and sense of humor, as she has a way to brighten up everyone's day. We are so proud of Presley's amazing end to middle school and look forward to big things in her future. Next, we'd like to recognize Island Jacobs. Please stand up. Island attends Mendon High School and was nominated by Mrs. Hyde, Mr. Mullenich, and Ms. Julian. Island Jacobs perfectly defines what it means to be a student at Pittsburgh Mendon High School who does their best, is their best, and tries to make a difference every day. Throughout her time at Mendon, Island has had a way of making people feel valued and cared for. Island is mature beyond her years. She independently manages her time, participating in extracurriculars, including varsity track and field, and rock to change, as well as working a part-time job. Though she has spent half of her day attending the EMCC Criminal Justice Program the past two years, her presence at Mendon has a significant and lasting impact. Island can often be found advocating for social justice throughout our school community, including presenting at a staff meeting about boundaries and microaggressions. While many students would struggle talking to a room full of adults, especially their teachers, Island did so with composure and confidence. She is determined and knowledgeable, making her a great voice for her generation. The world needs more students like Island, willing to learn and share what they know to make their community better. Island has continued to grow and try new endeavors every year in high school. For example, this year, she was a leader during all of our pep rallies. She did a great job getting the students hyped and excited for the homecoming game and the Rainbow Classic. In addition, she started working with the football team this year. When Island told Ms. Hyde that she was attending her alma mater, St. John Fisher, next year, Ms. Hyde was ecstatic, knowing that all she had done for Mendon High School will continue into college, making Ms. Hyde excited for her future and for the future of all those whose lives she will touch. Island is charismatic and fun to be around. Students and staff can agree that our community is stronger with Island here to lift us up when we are down and lead us to a brighter future. For all of these reasons, Mendon High School is excited to nominate Island Jacobs as our Pittsburgh Pride recipient. And next, we'll have Superintendent Puro come back for the next three.
I was reading all of the descriptors, and I heard the word "determined" and "always wanting to make a difference." I have a superintendent's advisory team of students, and there's eight Mendon students, eight Sutherland students, and one day, she just showed up, and there was a process to get there. She's not supposed to be there. And so, I then went to her counselor, and I said to Mr. Mullenich, I think, I said, "Is Island..." She's like, "No." He's like, "She's overcommitted with everything." But... So, I said, "Island, do you want to stay?" She's like, "Yep, and I want to be on your... I want to be on the committee, too." I'm like, "All right." So, that's my story about Island. She's wonderful.
It is my pleasure to read wonderful things about Charles McConkey. He is a 5th grader at Park Road and was nominated by Mr. Ford and Mrs. Pano, and congratulations on your Disney trip. We're good, right? It is our honor and privilege to nominate Charles for the Pittsburgh Pride Award. Charles is a student who exemplifies the definition of going above and beyond the expectations. Charles McConkey, or better known as Charlie, is dedicated, he's determined, he's honest, he's caring, compassionate, and a true role model for his peers. These are just some of the many attributes that Charlie exhibits daily at Park Road. Charlie is a dedicated member of the school's safety team, a representative for student council, a member of the school orchestra, and 5th grade choir. He shows up every day with a smile and an eagerness for learning. Charlie puts forth 110% in every aspect of school every day. He is focused, cares about the quality of his work, and is an important leader in our classroom. Charlie is one of the most empathetic learners when he listens to diverse perspectives and genuinely wants to be part of the learning community in our classroom. He's an avid reader, a thoughtful writer, and an inquisitive mathematician. In 5th grade Humanities, we discuss social, political, and racial injustices throughout the course of our study. Charlie always participates with kindness, honoring human dignity, and providing a perspective that is not only thought-provoking, but honest and compassionate. He speaks highly of his peers and his teachers, and is always willing to help someone in need. Charlie is always polite, kind, and respectful in all of his interactions. He exemplifies the saying "Treat others the way you want to be treated." Charlie is proud to be a student at Park Road. Charlie became a representative for the student council this year. He proposed group projects that would enhance and enrich our school community. His compassion and passion for making a difference were exemplary for other students to look up to. Charlie cares about the school, the environment, and the well-being of others. He has paved the way for other students to follow in his footsteps. It is our honor to recognize Charlie as an outstanding citizen, humanitarian, and scholar. Charlie, you have made such a positive impact here at Park Road, and we are so proud of you. And next is Quinn Morissette. Quinn, would it be too embarrassing if I asked you to come up here? Or do you want to just stay there with your family? It wouldn't be... Okay. Can you come up here? All right. Can you stand up here so everyone can see you? Can you stand up right down the chair? I know we're... There you go. Okay. Okay. I got you. Now, there is a story about Quinn. You are so patient and perseverant. It's unbelievable. So, Quinn was supposed to get Pittsburgh Pride the first time we had it this year, and she was unfortunately not able to come because we canceled it because of weather. So, that one, she was really bummed that she couldn't make it. That was terrible, huh? Yeah. Sometimes life isn't fair. So, then, fast forward to our next Panther Pride, which unfortunately, she got sick the night before. And you couldn't come to that Pittsburgh Pride either, right? Remember that?
I think so.
Yeah, that was horrible. That was horrible. And in Quinn's words, "We were all dressed up that night. We were dressed fancy, and we got the call that it was too snowy, and then I was too sick to go. I've waited a really long time for this." Okay. So, I'm going to read about you, okay, Quinn?
Yes.
Okay. You were nominated... Quinn is a 1st grader at Thornell Road, nominated by Mrs. Dacey, Mrs. Archer, and Mrs. Apolito. Not everyone in 1st grade can be a role model for their peers, let alone adults, but Quinn is that amazing young lady every day. She radiates kindness, and that starts as soon as she arrives, and lasts way beyond dismissal. At our school, we strive to have all students live the Thornell Road way. For Quinn, it seems that she made that way. Quinn is the first one off the bus with a high five... or a wave to every adult that she passes. As if built with radar, she seems to have an intuitive ability to know when a peer needs a friend and finds a special way to show she cares. She is the first to welcome students from our developmental program to sit with her and her friends during lunch when they are alone. She offers a helping hand to clean up. She always says hello and goodbye to adults every time when she enters and leaves an area, and does it with a smile that just makes you naturally smile back. It's safe to say, young or old, if you're lucky enough to run into Quinn, in a day, your day will always be made better. This sincerity and kindness translates into the best classmate and cheerleader you can find. While always doing the right thing herself, Quinn is constantly encouraging her classmates to do their best and to persevere through challenges. Her patient and kind approach is delivered so subtly, you would think that she has had decades of practice. Recently, students were given the following writing prompt to complete. "If you could have one superpower, what would it be?" Obviously, a 1st grade favorite topic. Most naturally, the 1st graders wish for the ability to fly, or to have super strength, or invisibility, or out-of-the-world skills. However, Quinn's response was unique. She said if she could have any superpower, it would be to spread kindness as far as she could. Well, Super Quinn, congratulations. You already have that superpower, and we are lucky enough to see it every day. 4th grade, Jeff Road Elementary, nominated by Mrs. Phillips and Mrs. Farrell. That's a pretty dress. Okay. You're in charge of our insurance policy. Everyone signed a waiver before... Okay. Isabella is a 4th grade student at Jeff Road who fully embodies the term Pittsburgh Pride, showing pride in herself, her school, and her community. Isabella is a student who demonstrates outstanding character and positive qualities socially, emotionally, and academically. Isabella is hardworking and perseveres during difficult concepts and tasks. When Isabella encounters a challenging task, she never... When Isabella encounters a challenging task, she never gives up. She keeps trying. She embraces new learning with a smile and is always willing to try something new. She is a student we can count on to offer assistance to others in any way she can. She works hard during the school day and her outstanding work ethic carries over with her after-school activities, girls on the run, best buddies, and chorus. She is proud of her accomplishments, but most importantly, she is proud to share and celebrate the accomplishments of others. Isabella is friendly and kind to her peers and teachers. Each and every day, Isabella greets you with a good morning and with a warm and welcoming hug. She truly takes the time to get to know others, share in their interests, and remembers even the little details that can make another friend smile. She is always putting herself, putting others before herself. She's willing to share a school supply, offering half of her lunch when her teacher forgot hers. For real? Did you give your teacher half your lunch?
No.
Okay, good. And bringing in a slice of her birthday cake to celebrate a lunch monitor. A special example of Isabella's kindness is every year she makes a card and a handmade gift for another fourth grade student since they share the same birthday. Isabella has empathy for others. She is caring and protective of her younger kindergarten sibling. Isabella is respectful to her teachers and peers. She participates in best buddies, which promotes respect and inclusion for students of all abilities. She is the first one to step up and offer to be a partner or friend if a classmate is in need. Isabella is a student we can always count on and do the right thing. Overall, Isabella is such a wonderful example of a student who demonstrates the true qualities of Pittsburgh Pride. Every day, she works to do her best, be her best, and most importantly, make a difference in the lives of others. Her teachers are so lucky to be able to work with such a remarkable young woman. Way to go, Isabella. We are proud of you. Okay, so to wrap this up tonight, if I could, have all nine candidates stand up, please, or recipients, rather. All nine of you. Give them a big round of applause. We are so proud of all of you. Thanks for all you do for our school every day. You make us a better place to be, to work, to live, and we thank you. If you could, walk over and get your plaque and your letter and then find your way behind the Board of Education, and we're going to take a bunch of pictures. Everyone else, feel free to take pictures as well.
Our photographer does not mess around. The letter gets her shots in person.
Principal's report from Stephanie Bart, Jefferson Road Elementary School.
Well, that's tough to follow, but exciting. Thank you for having me tonight and a very, very heartfelt thank you. And my first principal's report is the principal at Jefferson Road in this first year. Many thanks to the Board of Education for your support and for the wonderful tour and visit and an over-the-top thank you to the central office team for the unwavering support across the ebb and flow of the first year. And to the very best staff at Jefferson Road, so grateful to be joining them on the journey and to the students and also the families in our PTSA. It's been an absolute honor and privilege, and I'll have to work hard not to hurt my face here with smiles and just really proud of the Jeff Road community. So, when I started last summer, a quick question was, "What's our theme this year?" And I said, "Well, I don't know. I'm just joining the community. I'm not sure what you need from me in service and what we need together." And quickly, over the entry meetings across the summer, settled on joy and staying student-centered in all that we do. So, an unofficial theme this year has been really discovering the joy and the passion in the work that we do and bringing that to our kids, families, and teachers. So, we have some young faces there. This was the second day of school, an impromptu, "Hey, we're, look at us. We're all together again." Just so happy to be back to start the year and have seen so many of those moments across the year. And there's our entire student body gathered. It's been wonderful through concerts and different functions to come together as an ever-growing student population and just come together and feel that energy together. So, we are discovering the joy across the year. And one of the most exciting pieces that I've had the privilege to join is the engagement and excitement and passion of the staff around instruction and bringing together really our core principles through the strategic initiative. So, as you've heard, across the year, since we came together last July at our Board of Ed retreat with the leadership team, we worked really hard this year to anchor into the strategic initiative across the year and really focus on rigor, engagement, authentic learning that's student-centered and individual to each and every child, with their voice included, with their families' voices, and with our staff. Certainly, I'll speak a little bit tonight on our instructional practices that we're focusing on. We continue to really work hard to create a welcoming and affirming and consistently safe environment for our school community and also focusing in on those curriculum structures. And a very big thank you also to the Jefferson Road Instructional Leadership Team who has welcomed me in and been absolute partners across the year, guiding our work together in this first year as I joined the community, but also really anchoring into our strategic initiative and showing such enthusiasm. So, as you know, we've had our anchoring documents that guide the work, and the first two are bolded, and these are absolutely where we've spent a lot of our focus and we're ready to move into the third document, but also continuing to anchor into each of these through our conversations and faculty meetings. We've had phenomenal superintendent's days. I came flying out of the October superintendent's day, so excited and eager at all the work that unfolded there to kick off the year. Certainly through our next-gen skills and really thinking about what our graduates have told us, what the community has identified as what we need when students are ready to leave us and move on. And it's also been a real privilege to see that work start in my last position at the district office and then see it unfold and roll out at the building level and feel the excitement in Jeff Road around the initiative to really focus in on those graduate-ready skills, our CRSE framework, and make sure that our environments are equitable and culturally responsive. And we're moving into re-engaging our Jefferson Road Social, Emotional Learning Committee, which will really nicely dovetail with the work we've started this year, and also the district-level chartered committee where we can carry that work through our building. So, a few pictures, and this is where I just sparkle with pride over the enthusiasm of the teachers to anchor in and really continue to look with fresh eyes. We have a phenomenal staff that's committed across disciplines, from our grade-level teachers to our related service providers, to our paraprofessionals, to our cafeteria staff. Everybody's involved in really meeting that whole-child approach. And some of the learning here that's been really exciting, you'll see a couple different staff members presenting and colleagues willing to jump up and lead the learning and share what they're doing in their classroom. Couple examples of the teachers that are up there, Mrs. Orman, who's also a member of our ILC, was sharing some jigsaw work. Mrs. Kokindis sharing chalk talks, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Mrs. Kenyon was sharing, as our speech-language pathologist, the benefits of the classroom audio system for universal learning for all and how important that was. We've got in the lower-left corner, our special area department digging into the next-gen benchmarks, and our learning specialists in the upper-right corner doing the same around those rubrics for how are we going to know when our children are successful. It's been awesome because after each of those instances, the conversation that bubbled and the times where then you'd see colleagues pick up the work that has been tried in other spaces and carry that through really brings that consistent and equitable approach to our instruction. Certainly, a little bit of magic there in our next-gen skills. One that's really been a focus is the creativity and innovation. When we think about finding children's joy in their learning and also making that student-centered, we've also really focused in a lot on our communication and collaboration protocols. So, I would say that those would be two areas to highlight while we're continuing to dig into the rubric language on critical thinking, problem-solving, research, and learning mindsets continues to grow. We've got butterfly discovery right before the release there and a little bit of the spark and excitement that kids, just to see their moments and their ah-hahs and then their next-up wonders is another piece that we're really trying to work on questioning techniques and how do we continue to extend their learning and their next steps in their thinking. I'm just jumping around a little bit. You've got two in the upper corners there, discussion protocols at work. There's a jigsaw in process and that one, or in progress. That one was neat to see because that was the same class in a couple different spaces I kept popping back to partner with the teacher, and they were jigsawing. So, second grade, leading the learning and being experts and then coming back together from social studies to ELA and how do we focus on capitals and where do those fit and who's going to be the expert of which part of capitalization? So, that was pretty neat to see. Got hands-on learning and involvement in PE. And then those two middle there are the learning mindsets and how do we take a minute to understand who we are as humans on our journey, K5, and where we're going next? So, being mindful and coming together to create those classroom communities. The last piece there, the creativity poster, was really neat to see. I was wandering through on just some instructional locks and saw that anchor chart in a fourth grade window and in the same week unprompted saw it in a first grade bulletin board. And to see the students' voices around what does it mean for me to be creative at those different ages was pretty neat, and those really, I think, built off of our time as a faculty. So, just a few different examples there. And continuing on, certainly we focused in our strategic initiative around some of the resources in the instructional hub, but also through the work of collegial circles, staff's own independent research that they're bringing in ideas to try and communicate. The middle one there is a version of the World Cafe in first grade. Mrs. Lushley called that the Learning Cafe and greeted them at the door with quite the ensemble to welcome them into the learning, right down to glasses and hats. And they're in there with their little cafe tables, but the hard work on there was story elements and how can students talk. So, at each group at age six, seven, they were leading a group discussion and they were moving through those stations and really able to anchor into their thinking and connect to each other and to include everyone. And then there was one teacher-led station as well. But it's really great evidence of explicit intentional instruction at any age and the kids rise to those expectations and those roles. We've got chalk talk happening again, and I highlight that one out because, again, that built off what started in fifth grade there in the upper right and then carried over into art class. And the art teacher came to me after, she's like, "How can I do this and where does it fit?" So, some of those conversations, and they were really able to anchor into some pieces of art and what that made them feel. And then another jigsaw in progress there in a different classroom. So, the teachers really and the staff have been, in so many different ways, excited to talk about instruction and how that connects to creating those welcoming environments where all kids feel heard and like their learning goals are individualized. We continue through the CRSE framework, and we really spent time this year looking at the student portion of that document, and that has started conversations that will continue into next year. So, we originally really looked at how do we, as staff and as families and as district leaders, create those environments? But taking a look at the student portion was really empowering this year, but also created a lot of wonders. What does that mean for a first grader in that section? How do they use the language and how do they own their learning? So, it was a neat dive at the starting level, and we plan to continue that work. We continue with our Trusted Adult Project. Our counselor, Liz Candace, goes into each room and we identify those connected adults and where we need to foster those relationships. So, that happened in the first quarter to third of the school year, and we've circled back on some of that data. Morning meetings, giving a structure and really anchoring into those as a consistent practice, classroom by classroom, and then building into community circles or even classroom meetings for problem-solving and bringing voice in that space. I would have to give the staff a shout-out, the turnkey training that's been at work at Jefferson Road over the last few years, building on what some staff have been trained in from Period and our partners in restorative initiatives, taking that out. The counselor's presence in particular in the classroom lessons has really lifted up teachers to be ready to run those circles to foster that connection, whether it's social, emotional, or it's academic. We have a lot of staff really starting to do that independently, so that's been wonderful. And then certainly the gift of time on the most recent Superintendent's Conference Day to look at safety and security in our physical plant in the building and what staff need has been really well-received and thought-out in terms of next steps for making sure that we foster a safe and secure environment. So, you've got some circles at work there across the top, from a music circle in the middle grades to a fifth-grade community circle early in the year to a kindergarten circle down on the carpet there. And then it cut off a little bit, but the jigsaw there is individually, we're unique but together we're a masterpiece, so kind of fostering that curriculum and also different pieces and places where we can have kids literally see themselves in the classroom and also through their work and their student environment. And then just a few of the ongoing resources, and this is really where we're excited through ILT. We did some goal-setting and survey work in October or so with the leadership team of what would be those next steps that you need to be able to meet all the objectives and learning goals and everything on our collective plates. And one of the biggest pieces that came out, really even separate from the strategic initiative, just specific to Jeff Road's wish, is some vertical alignment and common resources and language for math instruction. So, it really comes together nicely with the ad hoc recommendations for reexamining our regrouping practices. We have that in the works at grades four and five, and a lot of explicit and intentional planning toward next year, also including our standards leader, Denise Sobel, in that conversation, how can we put into the hands of teachers the resources that they need and the practices for instruction to create that workshop model. Lots of teachers excited and starting to dabble in collegial circle work from UFLI, which is the literacy initiative out of the University of Florida, building our thinking classrooms. We've got four or five teachers engaged in that work and really thinking, how do we create the math environment differently to sort of defront that classroom and to bring spaces and conversations to different ways to do that for students so that their voice is heard and they're comfortable in their environment and everyone sees themselves as a mathematician? And then certainly a heavy focus right through our most recent Superintendent's Conference Day, working on the science of reading, how are we shifting our practice while also building on what we do well for students with some of those consistent resources and training, letters training with all of our learning specialists, joining in on some of the training that the reading specialists have as well. And another highlight this year was our work around re-taking that time to come back together in a really dedicated way around student support meetings and success meetings. How are we looking at our data consistently for kids as a grade-level team? Certainly, we use AMES Web, but a number of benchmarks, and how can we strengthen that so that classroom by classroom, we're keeping a pulse on what kids need and where their progress is? So, a lot to celebrate, very proud of the instructional work that's in progress as I joined and continuing to unfold through this strategic initiative. And then a little bit around just bringing our collective voice together. So, again, new on the journey with the school community, but so excited to be with the students every day, with the staff, and with the families. Our student council is up and running in full force, and they've had such great voice around the school. So, a couple of projects that they came to me specifically with were certainly in the month of October around bullying and our DASSA Act. And that orange poster there is, "Together, we can stop bullying. United, to act with kindness." And that's every single student's signature, including checks for absences so that we caught up with everybody to get that on there, but that was really student-led. The student council reps went into each room and talked a little bit about why that's important. And then they've also started some work this spring on a cafeteria culture project where we're kind of anchoring into common expectations in those shared spaces that are so important in our day, and the students really brought that forward. We have our safety patrol getting fitted for their belts there and a couple pieces of evidence for student buddies so that connection, classroom to classroom, across the ages and grades. The "We Believe in You" poster was from a first-grade classroom to a fifth-grade classroom getting ready for New York State testing, and they made the cutest song and they sent a poster up, "You're going to do great. It's just one more day." So, really supporting and lifting each other up. We've got some Valentine sent to the Wilmot Cancer Center through a service project there, and those buddies hard at work on their creations. Again, the voice of the ILT, a big thank you to them this year, our instructional leadership team, and the families in every single way. Jefferson Road's like a big hug, and the families just in every encounter, every conversation, every parent conference phone call, it's been just fantastic partnership. And certainly, a thank you to our PTSA. So, we have the motto that mirrors the district, and we say this each morning, "To be our best, do our best, and make a difference." And we really are starting, as we look forward to next school year, how can we start the year with goals in mind to anchor our work that pair with the strategic initiative and also meet the needs of students in the moments as they go across their time? We're going to start some of that work through our SEL committee and our Instructional Leadership Team planning this summer. And I'm ending with, this is a little video, although admittedly mine, and I'm not a videographer, but I had to share this. This was at our Jefferson Road in-gathering, our annual food drive in November, and the voices were just too precious. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to come before I play it, and especially at this time of the year, I said to Mr. Puro, "This has been a gift to be able to pause at this busy time in the year and look back on all that we've accomplished this year." And they're pretty great. So, very proud of Jefferson Road. This ends with a little song, very short, but these are the voices of Jeff Road. This ends with a little song, very short, but these are the voices of Jeff Rhodes. So there's that, and it ends with that. I literally was going through clips, and then I'm like, okay, wait, I have part of it, and I saw Julie Wilson in the front taking the other part of it. So I'm like, can I learn how to piece that? So had to hear the voices, sorry about the videography, but fantastic opportunity. So thank you for giving me this opportunity this year to join Jeff Rhodes and share a little bit with you about what we've been up to. Looking forward to next year. We welcome any questions. Thank you. Yeah. Thanks for coming. Oh, yes, we're working on that. Welcome, an affirming environment.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much.
There is a lot on this agenda early on. My gosh, that's a lot. And how about the first grader standing on the chair? That was pretty funny. I was sweating a little bit. So welcome to the budget hearing. The purpose of this evening is to, again, go over the budget guidelines, provide a summary of the proposed budget in a three-part format that's required by law, review revenue sources, including forecasted state aid and property tax levy increase, review the concept of a contingency budget, and review the use of COVID funds, and discuss and review propositions and voting information. I feel like we've gone over the budget guidelines many, many times, so I'm just going to highlight the bold. I also will, again, just highlight the work of the district planning team and how in-depth their involvement has been in this budget process, as well as going into our long-range financial planning process. So we always want to create a budget that is student-based first, a budget that reflects a high-quality professional learning for our adults to continuously improve. We also are cognizant of the need to balance the investment in education with the sensitivity to limited community resources, and you can see some of the ways we intend to do that. Maintaining fiscal stability now and into the future. I'll highlight again that one of the things that we can hang our hats on is, again, having the highest reading bond possible for school districts, which really does help our borrowing and costs associated with the budget. And then certainly meeting legal mandates and contractual obligations. This year, part of our theme, actually, last year and this year, has been around long-range financial planning and what our outlook is last year to, to three to four to five years out with a relative level of certainty. And I think the easiest way to, to, to think about the work that we're doing and, and the budget process is to think about the budget in, in just two buckets. And, and that's pretty much almost our entire budget. So we have the, the levy, the taxes we collect is the big bucket, and then we have state aid, which is the other bucket. And the things that we have to contend with as we think about long-term financial planning are what both of those buckets are going to look like, while also contending with challenges that are out of our control, like compression, inflation, contracts, energy, et cetera. So if you think about just the tax levy bucket, last year that bucket was given to us at 0.08% increase. So that's a real small increase in state aid or in tax revenue. The other bucket was actually great. State aid, or the state ed department did a great job. The governor brought up our state aid, and we were able to have a, a really successful year last year. This year, it's reversed a little bit. So we have a, a tax levy that's increased from last year, and we have state aid that essentially is decreased when you look at inflation in particular. So our foundation aid is about, it was about $1,000 more. I think we ended up at around $8,000 more, more than, than last year. And, and so our job is to look at what those two buckets will do relative to the budget, knowing that we have other factors that we have to contend with. It's been a tricky year for all school districts as we look at expiring federal COVID funds. All of us are also looking at how do we set money aside for electric buses and costs of those vehicles moving forward? We will struggle as we look and project in the future, I think, most districts, well, and many are right now, thinking about how do we provide the best quality of service to our students when we look at those two buckets that are growing minimally when the outside world with inflation and, and general costs, growing at an exponentially higher amount? So that's the work the district planning team is doing, will continue to do. But want to thank Mike and the business office for, for pulling together this year's budget and for being so foundational at our district planning team, helping others to understand the budget and where we look five years down the road. As far as the process is concerned and timeline, we are at that yellow stage, which is the budget hearing. After that, we have the budget vote on May 21st, which will be at Barker Road Middle School. Asking everyone to come out and vote, please. I'm going to now turn it over to our assistant superintendent for business, Mike Vespe.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I won't, I'll be brief as well because we've done a fantastic job. I'd also like to thank the entire administrative team for their support and development of the budget. Obviously, we have a very thorough budget process, and we've really been working on this since November, but as I've mentioned before, this is a year-round process, so I really appreciate everyone's assistance. So as you can see, the total budget proposal is 161 million. It's about a 4.04% increase, I think, almost in line with what we see as the latest inflationary increase. Increases in salary and benefits, as you would expect, some small, a minor increase in, in equipment, an increase in supplies, which we chose really to implement. And we did increase supplies and materials by 10% overall to really combat rising prices. And then some additional increase in BOSI services, the majority of which that we've previously explained is really the idea of front-loading our technology funds so that we can better predict the aidability. So there have been, there have been some discussions about the notion of increasing our BOSI's funding for technology. And again, we've done, I don't think we've done on, on a communication side, a, a good job in terms of communicating that that generates about 60% back in aid. So for every dollar that we're spending, we're going to get that money back. It's an expenditure-driven aid. So that category itself might look like a big increase, but it's also going to drive the revenue that really is lacking from the state on the foundation aid side, but not on the expenditure-driven side. Just from a, an overall programmatic standpoint, just visualization where we see the, the majority of our budget is spent in schools, and then we really try to look at the central administrative costs to try to keep those low. So you can see the balance is here, and then, of course, our support services to get kids to school to make sure we've got clean classrooms, and then to get kids fed, but that's a separate budget. I think part of the challenge that we have with a three-part budget is this is an old law. We're still reporting the budget in a, in a three-part budget where we have administrative costs, capital costs, and program costs. And obviously, our goal is to drive as much of the budget towards program costs and keep the administrative cost as low as possible. There was a slight decrease in capital costs, but we anticipated that, and that's purely on financing for debt service. I added a little bit of detail in terms of the comparison, just so you can kind of see what that looks like. And I'll call attention to the administrative ratio, 9.69% last year, 9.73%, so minimal, minimal increase. A lot of that, Mr. Perro had gone into details, is the fact that we are going to have some transition mentoring services and some guidance with newer administration in the, in the coming year. And so that's what's primarily driving that, and then you can see the comparison. And again, what we want to see is that uptick in that support in our program budget, which goes from 76.79 to 77.24. Again, I'm not going to repeat what Mr. Perro mentioned, but these are our buckets. I covered this earlier in terms of all of the factors, very transparent with the tax cap. And then, as stated, it was 0.08% last year, 2.69% this year, with the, you know, with the largest difference, looking at the, the capital levy exclusion total. Why is that important in terms of the tax levy itself? 2.69 pales in comparison to what actual inflation is, which you see is at that 4.12% overall. So that was the factor that's used. The real issue here in the future from an advocacy standpoint is a 2% tax cap is good when inflation is nil, right? And looked at positively, but when inflation is hot, it really erodes dollars to school districts and really limits our ability to provide the programs and services that we have. So if you look at the cost drivers that we have in, in a school district budget, this is not just a Pittsburgh issue, this is going to be a statewide issue where we're going to see challenges. When you see inflation at 4% and a limitation at 2%, it's, it's out of balance. And I don't think when this first started that there was an anticipation that we'd have back-to-back-to-back years of hotter inflation. So I do think it's something that's going to challenge us in the future from an advocacy standpoint. We've covered this, you know, we're very fortunate to have foundation aid restored over the last few years. That certainly is not the fact. I'm still citing the, the $1,161. I love saying that because it just really illustrates the fact that we have put together, I think, a, a great budget for our students and our staff, all while receiving a little over $1,000 in new foundation aid. So I would say that that's a miraculous effort from everybody that's been involved in the budget process and keeping taxes at 2.69%. So we're very, very fortunate this year. Again, as Mr. Perro has alluded, that's really positive, I'm feeling positive about this budget and, and having this discussion. I'm very, very concerned about that percentage into the future. So I think, you know, it's something that we got to continue to look at. So overall, the tax levy is at 2.69. We continue to see an increase in sales tax. Again, that's what people are spending, but that's eroding a little bit, so I'm a little concerned about counting too much on sales tax. Interest earnings were higher for longer with the Federal Reserve rate. So I continue to see us earning more interest earnings by investing our cash flow. That's a positive. Again, how, how long can we count on that is a question. We continue to sell our old buses and generate more revenue instead of auction. And we also are using more out of our savings account. So this is something that we have to keep an eye on as we go forward, using more funds out of our savings account to support the budget. So overall, we're proposing 161 million. You can see 22% of that comes from state aid, 71% comes from the levy, and then the other sources are sales tax and then fund balance and reserves. I don't like to spend any significant amount of time on a contingent budget because I hope we never see a contingent budget. Basically, when the tax cap came into play, a contingent budget means your tax levy increase would be 0%. So that would be significant in our case where we'd have to turn back about $3 million from a budget-to-budget increase. That'd be significant, right? So no capital improvements that we have in there, no equipment, so that would really set us back. So we hope that that's never the case. It also curtails facility use, where you can't use facilities with, with having, without having, with, with any significant impact on the taxpayer. So I, you know, I, I hope we never get there, but we're, we obviously have an obligation to cover this. And we publicize this as part of our communications as required by law. So again, fast facts, we did a tremendous job. We closed a $600,000 budget gap. We maintain all of our programs. We're within the property tax cap. We've got a 4% budget-to-budget, and we're fiscally responsible. I've mentioned this before in presentations, there's four things to be voted on, right? The budget vote, the capital reserve for bus purchases, which is a little higher than normal because we are getting ready for that eventual transition to electric buses. We are going to renew our capital reserve fund for instructional technology purchases to renew that commitment. And we're also going to spend some money out of our existing capital reserve to offset the expenses, investments that we are making in technology. So these are the resolutions. Again, no tax impact with any of these additional resolutions. It's essentially using our savings account to offset expenses. Just like to have the language on here so that folks know what they're looking at when they go into the vote. What's new this year is we do have early voting on, you know, besides absentee voting, and we've already met all of the official actions at prior board meetings for all of these requirements. Quickly, I have to mention the American Rescue Plan funding. This is it. Final amount of federal funding, about $1.2 million, $257,000 had to cover, or had to address learning loss. This grant, last COVID funds, gets closed out September 30th of the upcoming year. So that's it, no more federal support. This is where you're going to start to see a huge impact on school districts. Requirements for the budget vote, at least 18 citizen of the United States and legal resident of the districts for 30 days. But that's all in good hands with our, our district clerk, Ms. Carpenter. We are ready to go, and we've got all the information online for the budget. We've got them, the budget books out where they need to be, at schools and libraries, and we are ready to go.
Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Vespe.
Thank you.
Next, may I entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from April 16. Sarah and Emily. Thank you, all in favor? None opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Next, may I have approval of the May 9, 2024 meeting, special meeting? That would be Renee and Sarah. All in favor? With one extent, one extension from Emily. Okay. Thank you. All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. So as we are winding down our work at Monroe County School Boards Association, there are no reports presented. Days to remember, May 21, 2024, of course, annual budget vote and school board election from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 b.m. We're closed for Memorial Day, but at least six of us will be participating in the Memorial Day Parade, community-wide. On May 29, there is the Mitzvah, annual meeting. Several of us will be attending that. June 6, there's a board visit tour at Sutherland High School, and by show of hands, some who can attend that. Thank you so much. And our next regularly scheduled board meeting is June 11. Thank you. Next, we'll have approval of the annual vote and poll workers. May I have a motion? That would be Dave Berg and Kim Hules. All in favor? Any opposed? None? Hearing that? The motion carries. And next, our financial, another financial report from Mr. Vespe.
Okay, I'll keep my comments brief on the treasures report. Really, the, the main item to highlight on the revenue side, again, is the interest earnings and, you know, that continued positive cash flow and having that being vested. On the, on the school lunch, we've got lower revenue with higher participation, so we continue to monitor that. And as I've stated along, we do have a plan that's in place to be profitable, but certainly not as much as in, in prior years. And so that's something that we're, we're keeping a close eye on. Again, we, we're, we're focused on the cost of food increases and then, you know, but with that higher participation, there's a little bit of offset that's there. Staffing is somewhat stabilized for the moment, but continues, you know, to give us challenges on a daily basis. on a daily basis. So overall, you know, I think it's a positive message. Again, I just think it's, it's something that we have to continue to, to keep an eye on. So that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. We have many actions to entertain. So the first one is their motion to accept the treasurers report for March 31, 2024. That would be Renee and Emily. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed. The ayes have it.
Okay. Next for your consideration is the quarterly extra classroom activities report. And at, at this point, it's just proposed, you know, as, as indicated. Nothing to add to it.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the quarterly extra classroom activities report? That would be from Dave Burke and Sarah Palusio. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay. Next for your consideration is the proposed food service budget, along with a, a pricing recommendation. This is as new and different. As you recall, there were some community comments that, that talked about portions, especially between the different grade levels. I think one of the challenging things about the food service program at Pittsburgh, and this memo does a good job of reminding all of us, is that we don't have any federal support. So all of the funding that we have to support this program really comes from our, our parents and our students' participation. So that is very unique in comparison to other school districts that have a community eligibility provision, where the meal is completely covered, or a school district that has, you know, meals that are subsidized by the federal and state government. So very unique, you know, that was very extensively studied, but we have to make minor course corrections along the way. We haven't had anything significant since post-COVID, and the recommendation is to raise the prices at the high school only by 25 cents. The rationale behind that was there was an adjustment. We, we did listen to some concerned stakeholders to increase the number of sides that come with a meal, that students can take a fruit and a vegetable as part of their lunch, increase offerings of fresh fruit, price adjustment on second slices of pizza if, if so selected. So we have made some of those adjustments. I also think we've done a good job of, of offering new food, which comes at a cost and, and an expense. And so the consideration is for that 25 cent raise in prices to really recognize at the secondary level, the additional portions and some of the additional choices. I also think if you look at the operating performance of the food service program last year compared to this year, we've tried to offer better service in terms of having staffing. So there's a cost to that. And as Mr. Piero had mentioned earlier, we also have wage compression and some inflationary pressures there. So I think a challenge, you know, a challenge of all these factors really leads us to the recommendation with the understanding that it's probably not a good time, you know, based on everyone paying more for everything at the grocery store. So we, we kind of balance that out, which is why we made, you know, just the recommendation at the secondary level for additional products and additional food. So, you know, we're going to keep a close eye on it and I'm hoping that there won't be a need for any additional increases after this. That concludes my report.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the 2024-25 food service budget and prices? That would be Emily and Sarah. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you.
All right. Next for your consideration is the Energy Services Company for a possible energy performance contract. This is very exciting. We've been talking about this, you know, probably for six or seven months as part of our capital plan. We really had, we had four firms respond. We had great interest, very extensive proposals. We spent hours going through them and mapping them out and then decided to conduct interviews with three of the four firms, had extensive interviews and have made the recommendation to appoint Johnson Controls. So very rigorous process. We're excited about this project from an energy saving standpoint. We think the timing is right. There's also federal money available for heat pumps and a possible solar project. So we're excited about the timing of this. Again, this selects the Energy Services Company, does not lead us down the path or doesn't, you know, make it mandatory that we approve an energy performance contract. We developed one and then we would come to the board later for an energy performance contract and have follow-up discussion about that process. Thank you.
Thank you. So may I have a motion to accept the Energy Services Company and Energy Performance Contract Resolution? Would be Emily and Renee. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed. The motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. Next for your consideration is the Declaration of Scrap Equipment Athletics.
May I have a motion to accept the Declaration of Scrap Equipment Athletics Department? Sarah and Dave. All in favor? None opposed. The motion carries.
And then the next would be the bid awards for many items, as you'd expect this time of year, on the consent agenda. Thank, agenda. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Vespi. Next, we will have a Human Resources Report from Mr. Clarton.
Thank you and good evening. First for your consideration is the Professional Staff Report. We have two administrator appointments, one supervisory and technical appointment, one SRP appointment. We have two teacher resignations, one auxiliary resignation for retirement, and three SRP resignations.
May I have a motion to accept the Professional Staff Report? Would be Emily and Sarah. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed. That motion carries.
Can I just say congratulations to Richard? And Jeff's son, Bradley, I think he just bolted. He was Channel 10 scholar athlete. I think I sent you the clip.
Beautiful. Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right. Next for your consideration is the Support Staff Report. We have one clerical appointment, three clerical resignations, one clerical resignation for retirement, four transportation appointments, one transportation resignation, four custodial resignations, and two food service resignations.
May I have a motion to accept the Support Staff Report? Would be Kim Hues and Renee. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed. That motion carries.
Thank you. Next for your consideration is consideration for a new position with the title Purchasing Assistant. This is a restructuring of a position in the Accounts Payable Department. It will not result in an increase in FTEs and will be cost neutral. It basically is taking place of the title Assistant Purchasing Agent, which we've had an issue with filling that position. And what we determined was this new position was more in line with the compensation.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the Purchasing Assistant prescription? Sarah and Kim. All in favor? None opposed. That motion carries.
Thank you. Next for your consideration is the contract approval for the Pittsburgh District Administrators Association. This is a four-year agreement that will help us stay competitive in a labor market that continues to be a challenge while remaining fiscally responsible.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the PDAA contract? Would be Emily and Dave. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed. That motion carries.
Thank you. And finally, we have memorandums of agreement on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have our Student Services Report from Mrs. Kataya.
Good evening. We have the Summer Enrichment Institute budget for your consideration. And this is a self-sustaining program budget. So the budget that you see there is comprised of the registration fees that are collected and in anticipation of the revenues from the summer musical production programs that will be taking place this summer. And registration is still open through June. So you'll see that number increasing as we have more and more registration.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the SCI budget? Would be Kim and Sarah. Thank you. All in favor? None opposed. That motion carries. Next, we will have a curriculum report from Ms. Ward.
I'm confident you have all done your AP Statistics homework since the last meeting. And so we are here tonight to ask for your board approval of the new AP Statistics textbook that was presented at the last meeting.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the textbook, The Practice of Statistics? That would be Renee and Kim Hues. Thank you.
And just whenever you have a chance to bring those books back, we would like to put them in the hands of students. Thank you.
Absolutely. All in favor? None opposed. That motion carries. Thank you. So we have a Special Education Report. Ms. Woods?
Good evening. The Committee on Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education Recommendations are on the consent agenda this evening.
Thank you. And next, we'll have our Superintendent's Report. Mr. Piero.
There is not a need for an executive session this evening. Just, today was a really neat day with showcasing our, our students. My morning started at 7:00 AM with 20 seniors that are on the Interact Club. They presented to me all of their different community service projects totaling 1,600 community service hours this year, which is just, just phenomenal. And it was interesting, as I juxtaposed that morning meeting with tonight's meeting, it was about our students changing the lives, making the lives of others better, going out of their way, using their time in a way that's going to help our community. And it was neat to see that bookmarked at, at both ends today. Before the board meeting, I had the privilege of going to Unified Basketball Game. What I loved about the Unified Basketball Game was watching alumni from the Unified Basketball come back and cheer their, their, their friends on. Melanie and I had an opportunity to, to talk with a couple of them. And I asked the question, did, did you miss us? And they do. I mean, this was the time of, you know, their, their lives. It's, it's such a remarkable sport. So do want to honor them and all they do. And then I want to thank Stephanie for her presentation tonight. It's interesting as we look down that row right there, we have Jeff Road, we have Men in Center, we have Alan Creek, all different levels of experience, but will be in year 211 as far as service in Pittsburgh. So now that we're going to wrap our arms around you with support and wish you the best of luck. And thank you for being here tonight. And that is all I have. Oh, it's not all I have. We also, for your consideration, is the first reading for Policy 6125. That's Workplace Violence Prevention Policy.
So noted. Thank you. And lastly, we will have, is there a motion regarding the consent agenda? That's from Emily. And second from Kim. All in favor? All in favor? Okay. None opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you. Is there any old business? Okay. Hearing none. Is there any new business? Thank you. And so there was no public comment submitted for this evening's meeting. And next, we will have a motion for adjournment. That would be Renee and Sarah. All in favor? None opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you so much.